This meeting was originally set for July 15th, but it was canceled for lack of a quorum. There was a bit of a tight squeeze when we gave the information to the board. I just think they don't want us to have time to get that information to them. In regards to the lack of quorum, there is a vacancy on BDA and Mr. Wolf has provided an individual outing of Kevin Niles, a resident of Jefferson Township on Nile Road, who volunteered to serve at BDA. Trustees are to make a verbal positive vote to not have to affirm.
Trustees, any objections to the appointment of BDA? All in favor, say aye. Aye. May's.
Yeah.
Gail will thank Mr. Mouse for his application. Looks like we don't have firm affirmation.
Other than that, I was in the process of researching and locating a service that will provide identifiers for the purpose of court filings for violations. And we ended up with TransUnion Credit Reporting Agency. They have software that allows us to find social security numbers and date of birth, which is what the local courts require for us to submit noncompliant violations to court. So we have that just now being in place. I think the paperwork has been sent to Mr. Wolf and he's had time to finish that. And then finally, for my report, I did compile a list of originally 25 properties. One had been removed, so we're down to 24 properties for participation in the Land Bank Download 2.0 program. Fire Chief Wright had inspected and made recommendations to be brought for the Board of Trustees. I emailed you meetings, setting the meeting for Thursday, August 26th at 10:00 a.m. to make those declarations based on Chief Wright's inspection and the recommendations. Just notified the property owners of record and have begun to obtain the required title searches that the Land Bank requires for each of those properties to go through. So we have a chance to get, depending on how much money they have available for us, we have organizational lists of two dozen, depending on how the title searches come back, and hopefully get those down. The Land Bank will be the download program and will administer that for us. And that's it.
Mr. President, I ask you a question. Justin.
Sure.
Justin?
Yes.
You sent an email to me and Mr. Wolf. I don't know if Mr. Wolf answered your question in regards to the nuisance property. Did you get an answer?
For which property?
The nuisance list that the trustees approved of assessment. I mean, the nuisance assessments.
These are all for the assessments or the auditors? Yes, that'd be a good response.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
I do. Administrator road report.
Good evening, trustees. This is all sort of community. Part of you, we wrap two reports. Room report is four pages. The administrator's report is 10 pages. It brings you up to speed on what all projects I have going and what I've done in just the last 30 days. Many of them that you know that I'm doing, many of them are what needs to be done. So you can read through those lists. I do want to point out something about Justin. Put the date of August 21st as he mentioned. That has to be a public hearing with trustees present. I'm sorry, 20, 21, 26, I apologize, August 26th. He discussed the fact that they propose based on whatever the result of that hearing is. So you're required to be here at 10 o'clock on August 26th. Okay. You passed a lot of resolutions last meeting. We are preparing the purchase orders for each of those resolutions. So be looking in the mailbox. I will send an email to all of you that are in there. And then you guys need to look at them and then approve them because you've already approved resolutions on all those expenditures. So they will be in there soon. I mentioned that Captain Flag worked really hard with his three officers and myself to hopefully, you know, make us another site for another filming of a movie of Jefferson Township and the beautiful land that we have in this area. Sometimes if you had a hotel or a restaurant in town, you'd make money because they bring their whole crew, but they stayed in the rain because we don't have a hotel or whatever. They did cater for one of the Jefferson restaurants, though. So I gave them the phone number and they ordered some food from one of the restaurants. So I thought that was very good. Fire truck, as you do. You're in the meeting. Understand that you're there for informational only. You cannot make decisions there. You cannot debate there. You can only just listen to the presentation, ask questions, and then if you have alterations to you, then ask them to make those for you. But they have to be in writing that you want these alterations done. There has to be a paper trail amongst all the research. And all three of you have to sign that paper that goes back to the manufacturer if you decide that you wanted changes to their proposal. So keep that in mind. So please take notebook and paper with you that day and write down anything that you discussed and worked with the vendors so we can follow the paper trail and keep them up to date. We continue to ask in the road department. We don't have a list of roads if you want fixed. We found three drainage pipes, or we've been explaining three drainage pipes have been there for at least 10 years and never been fixed, and they continue to fall in. We need to make those emergency repairs, but you trustees are going to have to give the authority to do that. One of them is very large. Mr. McQuire and I spent four hours driving around the township last week, and we found all three of those, and that big one is going to be a huge expense on 40 Road East. But we have more than just those three. And so you can't just say, well, fix it. Well, you throw kind of asphalt into it and now you crane it and the pipe doesn't work anymore. So it has to be a total removal. So you have to have the equipment to do it. You also have crews that can do two cuttings at the same time. And so, you know, we are trying to get little things to be able to, you know, get us ready to do this, but we don't have a roller. We don't have a crack sealer. We don't have a hot box. We don't have a skid steamer. We don't have a, what do they call it, recliner? We have none of that equipment at Jefferson Township to be able to do that work. We want to do it in-house. We've never said we didn't want to, but when you don't have the equipment, you're limited on what you can do. There's an option out there to rent. I explained that to you last January in a meeting, and that didn't go anywhere. All I can say is the road department's doing the best job with all the equipment that we have. And we can't do everything that you think we can because we don't have the equipment to do. And that's all I have for our.
I have a question on that. Do you have the people's experience?
Yes, we have.
Vicky, you still wanted to ask a question, kind of covering this earlier meeting?
Aye.
Go ahead. Are you on duty? Do you want to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm Vicki Love. I should be here for a long year, at least for a reputation. It's good. I'm a yoga teacher. I live 1056 South Union Road, right on the side of the, you look up the Union Road, you should go north and see a wind turbine. That's mine. That is me. And I need to, first of all, thank Mr. Wolf. He was very helpful in getting me in contact with people I needed to talk to about having the yoga class resume. We're resuming in this building on the 9th, which is a Monday, at 10:00 a.m. My regular class, I've already contacted them. We got the gym for that, for hour that morning, because we're going to have a class. But I wanted to thank them and I wanted to ask you all, if there's any way that I could get you a copy or some thoughts. I need maybe 25 copies of something to hand out. I want to show you some of that out in the hat down. Anyway, I'm really grateful. My voice is so good. I'm very grateful. So giving me a touch of people I need to talk to who are very happy to let us use this building. Neighborhood Association meeting at Jefferson Township is two days away, and if I could, I would like to have 20 copies of this little thing, which I'm also going to be putting up in the, well, a lot of space here. It's just, I don't know if you can see it. It's just, we're beginning again, Jefferson Township, Charalinda. It's free. I need, I need comments here in the township, but this is not, this stuff is hot. And like anything, say 20 copies. And so, what happened again? All right, that's it. I'm doing this, I live here, I'm never leaving here. I've been living here. Jefferson Township means a lot to me and I want to help everyone in Jefferson Township who's willing to try. I'm all, this is, this is very gentle thing. You don't have, you don't have to be a pretzel, I promise. I'm not a pretzel, I'm too old. So I can work. I want to work with anyone in the community who wants to come. I will happily work with you and you'll at least, and the firemen especially. You guys, if you're caring or bringing kids upstairs window, I want you to get your backs screwed up when you get stuck. I'll catch the child, but you're on the ground. Okay. Sorry, but that's where that is. And I just, I really appreciate it. I love Jefferson and I'm so happy I get my class now. Yay! Just make some copies of that.
I have a problem. I have a problem with copies.
This is not a work sanction. Thank you.
I will give you my address. When I get home, I'll make these four copies and sweep up my house and get them up.
That's all. I just, anybody who wants to come is welcome, please. It's great. We have a lot of fun doing this on Jefferson Township.
Vicky? Would it be okay if I took your flyer and put it on the website?
Sure.
I know we talked about it earlier before we finished that discussion.
Yes, I have, I have, I have three copies of that whole association.
They're now saying that they want me to copy it. So if you're, are you going to stay until the end of the meeting? Because we'll just go right next door and copy it for you.
Um, yeah, I'll go with.
If you can stay.
Yes.
If not, if you can't, I'll deliver to your home tomorrow.
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, that's the, that's the problem.
But this information is what you want on the website.
That is exactly what I want.
Exactly.
You're making copies?
Yeah, I'll make the copies.
I don't know. I want you to drop them. I'm sorry.
You want them on different pieces of paper or you want them just like?
No, that's fine. I'm not a, oh, I'm a person.
Thank you.
I'm Marion. You have three minutes.
Everyone be quiet for a minute. Just command it, quiet on your street. I mean virtually quiet. Okay. One of these people in my neighborhood, I want to show you a picture, Mr. Mann. Mr. McQuire, I'm your first. You see this thing right here? This thing right here?
Yes.
Okay. See?
Yes.
Okay. Let him see it.
I'm tired.
Who's saying it? Okay. Now let me tell you why I'm saying quiet. Just imagine you go to bed at 10:00. One go to bed at 10:00. There's that thing, there's a little motorcycle, and then there's another one. And you have to listen to it. Now, what I'm trying to say is if you're trying to sleep, how would you like that to happen to you? Would you like that? So one day, that lovely ATV broke down and I called the sheriff. He took his time, but he got out there, but they had moved it to the house. Okay, today, I had a problem. I was trying to take care of some business. I got back home. Next thing I know, three of them. Run, 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 run! Okay, 10 o'clock. When I get home tonight, I want to go to bed. And not only that, thanks to these lovely people moving on my street, I'm about to show you something else you got to see. See how lovely this house is? Oh, and I need to talk to you. You're the only person here. That, let me see. They have a lot of junk in their house. So I was told, you know, walk, if you walk up the street, thanks to them, I have to apply for this. Read every bit of it. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Mann. Thank you. Steve. I have to apply for that because I can't walk up the street because of the lovely dogs they have. Oh, and let me tell you a little story about that. July 15th, I took my dog. You might as well look at it.
You can go back to the podium.
You can look at it. Might as well. Um, Mr. Mann, thanks to those lovely dogs, all I did is walk up a little bit of a wire burn, just a little bit, to give my dog exercise. Mr. Mann should understand diabetes. See this thing right here? I have to have my exercise. I can't walk my dog up. I can't walk him past wire burn. I gotta walk him down the road. Also, um, I forgot it. Okay. Everybody says walk every place else. Every place out in Jackson, any day, well, excuse me, Jefferson Township. None of you have gone out on the street. Every place out here now has a pit hole. I got a little dog. I got a little dog. I'm on a cam. Jim? I tell you now.
Thank you for your comments. Three minutes are up.
You know? I know. I'm on a cam. You don't care and you think it's funny, but one of these days you'll find out how funny it ain't. And Mr., you're the zoning person?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to show you something. I'm not talking anymore. I'm just not sure.
Marion, I have to respond to you. I'm like, I have to work with you then. Can I applaud?
Okay. I will show you something. Yes. You see this car right here? This truck? He was driving the Southus. She was, yes, she was probably there as my number two as well.
Okay, so Marion, we heard you last meeting and feel for your situation happened to you with the dog coming out of here. I did make some phone calls. I know the old of the animal patrol. I tried to call them, but they do, they do have, they do have a department phone number, dial the number and then hit zero and talk to the lady. I spoke with her yesterday. And you can talk to her and file complaints and they will come check it out. So that and then about the comment you made just about the noise and the ATVs, for that, when that happens, you can call the sheriff.
I am. And you know what happened? The day I called the sher, it was yesterday, I called the sheriff, the ATV broke down. But by the time you got out there, they found a way to get it rolling up back to their house.
Okay, so maybe next time they won't. It's just going to have to be a, you know, we do care.
I do care.
As a trust, as a trust, you know, so that's, that's your options. I'm trying to work with you and give you some options.
I do call, but what Jim doesn't understand is everybody on my street, I had an age limit where they don't want to hear. I have a lady next door, she's in September, she'll be 84. I got a lady across the street, she said, "I'm seven." A lady up the street, she said, "I'm seven." Now come on. You may not be there, but one day you'll be there. You'll be to the point where you'll be on one of these. And you got to go up the street. Well, all I'm saying is, I try to insert my news. Like I told my one lady, I said, "I'm walking up the street." And she got mad and said, "Look, I got a small dog. If you make a mistake, I pick it up." They let 10 dollars out at 11 o'clock that night. There was one lady, had shit been here, she told me. They need a little package in everybody's neighborhood going down the street. And you better be in your house by 11:00 or else what happened to me? Somebody told me a 70-year-old lady was sitting in her house and three dogs got loose and they were pit bulls, killed the lady. So if you want to laugh, there's too many people moving out here with these dogs. I'm telling you now. I'm telling you. Because next time, I might, I'll be telling somebody else with. And there won't be any.
Any other citizens want to make comments? That's all I have paperwork for. We might have a citizen who'll say something though.
I would just like to know why the fire, the fire department report was omitted. I would like to know that on the, it says we have a fire department report, and I'm interested to know about the, if any, besides this, if anything else has come up with the tanker? If the fire department has a report.
Okay, do you have a fire department report?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wolf, did you write this report?
I did not. Thanks, man. You did me just as I arrived. I apologize for not sitting at the table. I was supposed to go up and say my phone was blocking the effect of this camera.
I did say that, yes.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to chief hand in this just recently, so I'm coming in here. Responded to voicemails and emails, paid, or asked, requested a fiscal officer to pay our bills. I guess at the last trustee meeting, you approved the hiring of four new people. Two of them resigned. One's on leave and the second one's on medical, who's actually to handle myself. That's really, it's my first day back and I'd really like to thank the elected officials, staff, employees, and the citizens who actually contacted me while I was on leave. Trustee required his wife, I'm sorry, trustee involved in his wife actually lives in the hospital. Very touching. I really appreciate that. But it is great to be back. The usual maintenance, tools around the station, going around the buildings. I understand that the SEPA compressor needs service, light switches, we had an electrician come in. I did some research and we had motion sensors with tear sack money last year, so if you go into a room, the lights come on, you leave and they go back off. But we had certain ones that we didn't do, like where city courses would be, we did not want somebody rolling over the middle of my, oh, and all the lights come on. So electricians just came back last month and then now have timers in certain offices and rooms. You touch it and it will stay on for five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, whatever you need. Again, trying to save the citizens money, replace a bunch of fluorescent lights with LEDs. My office alone will pay for itself in five months and then save us $75 every year in saving electric bulbs. The, every time you have an emergency exit, there must be a night light. There were 24 bulbs in the station above all the exits. Those alone will pay for themselves in 1.8 months, saving us $700 a year in electric costs. So it's very, very nice to create some LEDs. I have some fire extinguisher service. The usual EMS QA QI on run reports, station trains have 107 EMS calls for the month of July. Fire wise, we have 35 fire runs and again, the usual fire trains there. Maintenance, both generators and the medics have gone down. They have an average of 6,500 hours on them. New generators are ordered for both medics and they will be going out to have their new generators installed. Quartermaster, everyone has their own independent vest, so when they're on car crash scenes, they each have their own vest to protect everyone, especially in my time of change of laws. I ordered some new boots for the fire EMS staff. Fire prevention had a few inspections, commercials, business, and residents, a few inspections of all the food trucks for the fairgrounds and two fire EMS run reports requests. Somebody, this other just handed me this from the office manager at 1450 through Liscan. We had a fire inspector going and conduct a fire prevention, fire safety educational session with the residents and they're very pleased and committed their own effort and bringing the department for the past and current fire prevention activity. Some questions from the trustees?
Chief Wolfax, can you repeat your first statement when you first started your report about somebody this misses the park or something?
This missing?
Yeah.
The way it was a little bit was that you hired four new employees at the last meeting, maybe the first meeting in July. I remember doing, typing up a resolution, sorry, so it was four new hires, then there were two that resigned. I thought there was three, but it says here that two resigned, that one backed out or you noted it except that resolution, or that resignation. It says one employee was on leave and that two, well, I'm sorry, and nobody was terminated as far as, as far as this is, I don't recall or remember anything coming that it was only termination. But four new hires, one resignation, one on leave, and two on medical.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Trustees, we have a president who wants to talk. We're talking, we're going to take our letter. We don't have any more. You know, I mean, okay, okay, let's start with my report, just with that comment right there. So, meeting after meeting, the comment, the area for comments by citizens gets bigger and bigger. And it's just like, we don't want the residents to talk. Bold print, must sign and complete an attendance sheet, speaker list, blah, blah, blah. Must include their name, address, contact phone number, and a full description of the comments they're going to make. Just, it gets bigger and bigger about what we've got, the control we have on the residents. We need to let the residents talk, trustees. They put us in office, we need to listen to them and listen to what they got to say and act like we're here. So I have a problem, I have issues with that. That, you know, the last comment was, you know, you make a comment, you try to forward it, if you had your way, they wouldn't go talk at all. So what I've done, there again, I've done a lot of driving in the township. I mentioned about being there on Derby and got trouble for not doing it the wrong way. I thought to the fire department, it was asked about being, becoming, I was asked if that property could become a nuisance property. I thought that was under the fire department. I thought Mr. Mann was over the fire department. That's why I, that's why I told Tracy, I think her last name, that contact man because he's over the fire and that to become a nuisance property, the fire department does that determination. So if I was wrong with that, I'm sorry, that's why I said what I said. Mr. Wolf jumped on my ass. So I was kind of curious, what house, what's the address? You passed one pock on Mile Road. Do you have a house number?
That was your.
Okay, I'll buy Mile Road for it. So in doing that, I know while we bought another cutoff saw, we have a cutoff saw and we buy another one for $1,000. Was that PO done correctly to make that purchase? Anything over $750, it's a process we need to file. So I'm just kind of worried about the, again, the way we spend money, the way this township was progressing, the problems with it. That's all I got. We'll do some more spraying. Just getting hired in a day, I'll spray the cemetery and spray the fire stations again and take care of the spray and I should be able to do that this weekend.
Mr. Mann?
Okay, last meeting, we talked about the fire engine. And the reason for talking about the fire engine and bringing that back up was because we had one engine that was running. So right now, how many engines do we have? Chief Wolf?
We have four engines. Engine sixty is, our commission has been in there for about a year, been stripped. Sixty-two and fifty-nine are in service so-so. They constantly have them having maintenance and we're trying to keep them going between the two. And we have the brand-new Quick Attack, or as it's referred to as Rescue sixty-one now.
Okay, Friday, I think it was Friday, I was coming down Liston. And I pulled over because of, there was four or five, he said, coming down the street. Amolus was in front. The, well, the fire chief was in front. Amolus was second. And then a, the fight attack parkour that you have was next. And then another Amolus was in behind. Now, those, they went to Martin Luther Manor. Now, I'm looking at what do you have, what do we have for fight a fire? And I'm saying, and I, I say this, we cannot run one fire engine in town here at the township. We're, you know, we need more than that to do that here. Now, as you see, these hectors that we talked about, four hundred and four hundred and fifty-five days on one of them. And the other one's five hundred and forty-eight days. So as you see, that's over a year, a little bit of time. So I only make recommendations. You need to get something because we don't want to, Martin Luther Manor has fifty, approximately fifty rooms. So you, you know, say you have over fifty people in there. And most of those people have some problems. So you've got to be ready when you hit that building to go in there and do a search, get the people out, and then fight the fire. So I'm not trying to spend the money. I'm trying to make sure that we have the equipment to use now. So if anybody feels that we need to get something now while we're dealing with this and we talk about another thirty days before something happens, let me know and we'll, we'll talk about it.